Doesn't usually flash the media phones, you know.
Call me in order it's like six oh seven. For everyone's information, this is a public meeting. It is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcasts and internet posting on www.dighton-mass.gov. And next to honor, it would be to if anyone will join, pledge allegiance to the flag first.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Well, we don't have any public, so I guess we're not gonna have propaganda, are we? Moving on to item number five, new business A. To review discussing act on a and vote to issue a non-compliance health order.
Mr. Chairman.
You're gonna be here just.
Yeah, on this item, I'm gonna be here also.
Okay.
You guys wanna just call me when it's time to come back in?
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know which one to read first.
Well, the one with the black on the top, that was Marilyn requesting that the board.
Yeah.
Vote, and then the other is the.
Let me give a little, uh, little bit of background, I think. Because of our, our general bylaws are not where they need to be yet. As far as issuing compliance order on this. Recommendation has come from tobacco compliance coordinator. And with it, with a legal determination from the Mass Association Health Boards. We had a retailer, actually it was Almeida's Country Store at twenty fifty County Street. And she goes on to state on May twenty seventh, two thousand seventeen, Inspector Sarah LaRue conducted compliance checks in Dayton with a seventeen year old male. The only sale was at Almeida's, twenty fifty County Street, Dayton. Because we were in the middle of the bylaw situation, we did not take any action on this sale. On April twelfth, two thousand eighteen, which was approximately eleven months later or so, Inspector Sarah LaRue conducted compliance checks in Dayton with a sixteen year old female. The only sale was Almeida's again. Because we are waiting for the bylaw to be fixed, I contacted attorney D.J. Wilson from MMA. It was MMA, I'm sorry, it wasn't M.A.H.B. And attorney Cheryl Sabara of M.A.H.B. So we did get two legal opinions from MMA and M.A.H.B. And both agree that there is recourse available to the Board of Health, if only for this most recent sale. Both attorneys suggested that the Board of Health vote to do a health order in this case. This health order would be in the form of a letter on health department lead ad indicating that on the date and time that was a sale made, and the store has been penalized one hundred dollars. Fine would be paid to the town clerk. And as always, if the store wished to contest the health order, they could put a request in writing to the Board of Health for our hearing date. Now, I just wanna say that if our regulations and bylaw was up to date, would have been an automatic fine, so. This is the letter we drafted for signature and mailing to the retailer. Regarding violation of Board of Health regulations restricting the sale of tobacco products and sale and use of nicotine delivery products. Dear Mr. Collard, on Sunday, April fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, at approximately two fifty P.M., a male employee sold a box of Marlboro to a sixteen year old girl. Our records indicate he did not ask for identification. This is in violation of section D one of the above referenced regulation. And you are penalized one hundred dollars for this violation. Please send payment to the Dayton County Town Clerk at nine seventy nine Somerset Avenue, Dayton, Mass. If you wish to contest this ticket, please notify the Board of Health in writing that you would like to request a hearing in this matter. And I think we need the timeframe that they need to contact us.
Oh, if they want to appeal.
It's usually seven days.
Seven days.
It's either seven or fourteen days, but I make it seven.
Yeah, so.
They did, they just have to submit something right within seven days that they want to appeal, and then we skip one.
Yeah, within seven days of receiving this. Other than that, once it's amended, I would ask at this point for a motion to submit this to the retailer, once amended. And requesting if they want to appeal, that they do so within seven days. I guess that's good enough.
Yep, so move.
Okay, I'll step down second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pose. Okay, are you changing it now, Todd?
I can. I think I can.
Todd is good.
Can't print it, right?
No.
I can.
They can't after the meeting.
Yeah, we can, uh, we can all head over there after the meeting and get it corrected and signed at that time.
No, I should be able to.
Oh, you think? Okay.
If I override cable, I can. I didn't think to bring one with me.
Yeah. Generally, from what, what months I've seen, it was seven to, seven to ten days, but seven, I think, is the norm for.
Yeah, it's seven.
Appeal. Sorry. Otherwise, we might be waiting a year. So. Upcoming meeting dates and set the summer schedule. Presently, we meet on the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month. All the other departments that are meeting on Wednesday evenings have or will be setting the summer schedule. So as far as everyone is concerned here, that we wanna go with the second or fourth Wednesday of the month. It doesn't make any difference to me.
Second, I think would be better.
Doesn't make any difference.
Yeah, it doesn't make a difference.
All right, so why don't we set the future meetings for the second Wednesday of each month.
That was starting in June or July?
June, July, and August.
Looks like there's one behind Stacy over there.
So it's June thirteenth?
June thirteenth.
July eleventh? Which you will be back for.
Then August eighth.
August eighth.
Name are on problem.
Is that all right with you two, everybody?
Okay.
I would ask for a motion to approve the summer schedule.
So move.
Second.
Motion made second, it's set summer schedule at the three dates, second Wednesday of each month, whatever they are. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Vacation carryover request. You got vacation?
Does.
Get it.
Believe it or not, I've been here since September, so yeah.
About that.
I know it feels like a blink of an eye, but. I really have been a while.
You couldn't use quite all four hours of vacation.
Yeah, I was gonna use point zero four hours this week.
Is that like seven minutes?
Six, I think, yeah.
Anyway.
You can come in seven minutes.
First request is vacation carryover request. I believe it has to be about the twenty fifth, which is why it's on tonight's agenda. Gentlemen, I would like to respect the request to carry over twenty four point zero four hours of vacation time.
If you'd like, you can use the point zero.
And the other request is from Rosalind Grassy. I would like to re- respectfully request to carry over twenty eight point five hours of vacation time. According to the current using union contract, then carry over up to two weeks of vacation time. So they're well within that, so there would be a motion to approve the request of Todd Peller and Rosalind Grassy to a vacation carryover. Greatly appreciated.
So move.
Second.
Any motions made in the second end? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, let Carrie's. Think it goes to the board of slot next segment.
Yeah.
Cause normally has to be done by.
I think by May twenty fifth, they will.
Thank you.
Sort of. What I'm going to do is I'm gonna put on my thumb drive and plug it into the printer.
I had asked Tom Perry to, he has a couple of meetings tonight, if he could meet with us regarding item five D. To talk about the existing fees and payment procedures. So I would like to move on past that and go on to five E. Which is to review discussing act eight hundred Center Street, title five, inspection report. And I think I hope they is gonna give us some, an update on that.
Sure.
All right, so we received, well, back, let me back up a little bit before the title five extension was done. As you recall, we had orders on them to, the weather was bad. The weather was bad, we didn't have our files, we gave them extensions. Well, all of a sudden, no. Really? Um, all of a sudden, it, it came to light that asking them to do a title five inspection on the house when they're not selling the house, it's not a public health hazard, there was nothing imminent about it. And I informed the owner that I was asking for it because I would, if it was a possibility to tie the tight tank with a, an ejector pump into the existing system, so we would have that. So that, that didn't happen, so what we have is an inspection on the holding tank only. I call it a holding tank because there's no alarm in it. So it is a sealed tank, no outlets to it. It is sound and all that, so. Has to have an alarm. No, well, so what I was going to recommend to the board is that we allow her to keep a tight ta- a temporary tight tank there with the installation of alarms and a pumping schedule and et cetera, et cetera. With caveats that if they go to put an addition on, sell the house, split the property, whatever, they're going to need to upgrade to a compliance system. Because there is no money for them to put in a system at this point in time. Tying it into the other system, from what I'm, it wasn't inspected, but it's pits, and we know it's right next to Maris Lane, so there's a good possibility the water table might be involved, so we're not going after, so I feel it might be a decent compromise. The only issue that I have is we went and got the water meter readings for this garage that is there with two people living in it, and they're using a hundred thousand gallons of water a year. We have one pump of a fifteen hundred gallon holding tank in the last year. So there's a hundred thousand gallons of water and a fifteen hundred gallon tank. I don't know where the other ninety nine thousand gallons is going. They have a pool, they have a hot tub, but I don't think they're using that much water, so I don't know where the water's going. But nineteen solid. I mean, it was inspected. We didn't pump it down, but it's.
They could add a pump twice when we're using the practice slips.
That's a lot of pumps. That would be like ninety nine pumps to not report. That would be a lot of pumping to not report. So again, as a caveat of whatever condition we put on them is gonna be pumping at a minimum of twice every two months or every month or whatever. But that's what I'm thinking as a way to get us from where we are to where we're going. The only other problem we got is there's apart, there's bedrooms in this garage, and there's no permit for it.
The, uh, the concern I have is we had asked for the whole property to be inspected, correct?
We did.
And the reason for that was, well, title five says we're, we can do that. But the reason I thought we were doing that is because we wanted to make sure what was actually out there. Was that tied into the other system?
And it is not. Apparently, my guess is they're probably about four hundred feet apart from each other.
Okay.
And it goes down and back up, so they are not connected.
And then the other thing I had was, this was never permitted originally.
Correct.
So what do we do with that?
So we're sure there's no outlets to the, to anywhere.
Doing invisible.
So they can, we can do one of two things. We can either say, no, you have to put your system in now, or they can bring this tank, tight tank, into compliance as a tight tank.
Temporarily. I wouldn't give them a permanent.
Right.
And the thing is, we should probably check the gym and the assessors, because now where do they have that as that garage? Is that, is that a dwelling? Are they paying tax on a dwelling?
Uh, it is not a dwelling. But I know that's one of the issues that's going on.
Cause now, now we're saying you're right.
I know it's grandfathered into being an accessory apartment. And it's been over ten years. Which should be to, being taxed as a dwelling or residence or a.
Well, the problem is you can't have two on one property.
Principles, yeah.
On one property, so. I get the house was built in nineteen seventy four, the detailed structure. Oh, they have a chicken barn and a shed. That's the thing.
Well, I guess the bottom line is, do we wanna cut off some slack and?
Well, here's the thing.
You know.
Here's the thing, they're be- behind in taxes and stuff, there's an estate here, there's a divorce, there's a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah.
Any condition we put on them to tell them to fix it, it's not gonna happen. They can't, they're not even eligible for the town loan program because they're behind the taxes, so it's not gonna do us a lot of good to force that issue.
Just say they, either they kept it or got rid of it. Can, can, can you have those two structures? Can you have two dwellings on the same property?
It's not for us to decide.
But we're permitted, but something that's not permitted, we're saying, okay, just put an alarm on there then.
But it's existing.
Yeah, by zoning, you cannot have two principles, two dwellings on one property.
We can get Claire clarification from Jim before we vote on anything, but.
That's not, what I wanted to do is if we decide we're gonna do something, I can write a letter, we can invite Charlotte into a meeting, and we can go with her before we actually enforce anything.
I guess at the minimum, we just have to make sure of the standards right now.
We can put an alarm in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I'd rather have something that meets some kind of standard now, because that's better than nothing.
And I believe she's an electrician, so the cost isn't, she's not gonna be paying an electrician to do all the work, she'll be doing it herself, so that.
Who's an electrician?
Charlotte Gardner.
Really?
Well, I guess she spent a lot of time with Peter Blue, and so she knows a lot about.
Peter's a licensed electrician.
He is. But I guess she's studied under him, I guess, or whatever, and I mean, I, I don't know. I don't know all the ins and outs. Not for us to decide. We just gotta decide compliance, but it was a matter of the cost shouldn't be.
Well, that's up to, gonna be up to the building commissioner whether she's qualified to do the work.
But nothing to do with us.
So it says, designed to bedroom, two bedroom, actual two bedroom.
No, designed.
No, the inspector wrote down number bedrooms designed to the, with the design.
Well. It was an illegal construction. It was only supposed to be a, this is, should be a question mark.
And just say actual.
Yeah.
Just, just an accurate.
It's funny, I thought I pulled up the field chart of this already.
It's not on that poll.
I think, just my, and, and whatever we decide to draft up should also state, if for any reason by whatever means that property should be divided, which I don't think it can be, that a permanent septic system for that structure. We're not gonna leave a tight tank there if that property gets divided.
No, so my, again, my thoughts were if sewer became available, if they subdivide, if they, um, put an addition on. We could put, we could make it be a deed restriction on, recorded at the registry.
You can make it so anything beyond an emergency repair to your dwelling.
If they want to move back into the house, because right now they're not in the house, they're only in the garage. So if they move back into the house, the garage is decommissioned. We can do that. You know, there's, we can do just about anything we want.
That's a good, that's a good, that's a good point. Cause right now, there's only one, one dwelling being used on that property. The other one's vacated.
I'd like to ask, should they move back into the house that the, the septic system for that is decommissioned and can't be used as a dwelling any longer? I think we got a lot of thinking to do about that, well, you do.
Well, we do, but I just want the board aware, like say, at some point, I think we're gonna need to invite her and explain it, or we can talk to the building department about it. I'm more concerned with a hundred thousand gallons of water than fifteen hundred gallon tank, than I am about anything else, honestly.
Well, the pool's probably fifteen thousand. The hot tub might be a couple of thousand.
Fill it twice a year for argument's sake.
Now, now, moving forward, you can't go back now. Moving forward lasts for pumping records.
Yeah, and I think there would have to be a minimum pumping schedule.
We can say, we can even say we'll be monitoring the water meter reads.
They only do it every six months, but again, so do we want, right, but we can't say we want it to be pumped as often as you're using water. We, if you pump, if you use fifteen thousand gallons of water, we need ten pumping records, because if she's watering her lawn or filling the pool, whatever, so we can't make it a direct one for one.
Yeah, I think that the EPI has upstairs, I forget what it is, but it's a certain like percentage of it's not specific, it's title five, it's another, but like the average person uses X amount of water for household interior things and X amount for exterior. I can try and find it.
The soil board's upstairs.
The soil upstairs.
Soil.
Soil, yeah.
Yeah, it's upstairs. You know how to get up there?
No.
Down this hallway, straight down, down this hallway and up the stairs.
All right, so I say I can put something together, and I say, I, we gotta be very careful and precise with what we do. This isn't just a, hey, let's vote on it right now and move forward. I think it needs to be carefully thought out before we take action, so I can go talk to the building department about it, so. Any assessors can see what they're assessing it at, so.
Probably. Probably should get some info from Mallory also. She gets, uh, she's aware of the situation.
She is, so.
Just in case it turns into a legal issue.
So any draft letter or whatever, she can look it over and, yeah, so I'll put something together and.
At a, at a minimum, when you're talking to us, okay. Obviously, it stated that needs further evaluation, needs an alarm.
Yeah, it, it's not a pass, so, yep. Even if it has an alarm, as far as I'm concerned, it's still not passing, because it was never permanent in the first place.
Yeah, but right now.
Which now local group, I think so.
That's their dwelling for now, that, you know, they're there right now. So. I just wanna make sure it's safe, they're safe, everything.
Well, hopefully you can tune everyone involved, get something put together by our June meeting.
Yeah, like you said, we can put conditions.
We'll be over again.
So is Todd drafting something for you to vote on sending, or is he sending it and inviting her to the next meeting?
Drafting first of all.
At, at the June meeting.
But I gotta make her aware, so she wants to come to that meeting, she doesn't come to that meeting, so.
Good times, we can run the business, huh?
So good this one, I'll hold on to this one for a while, but. Tom's got a, had a soil board, then he's meeting with his wife at a seven thirty, so I don't know much free time he has to try to get down here. Let's talk, let's go into whole business, and we can talk about single stream recycling. As I think you are aware, cause I sent out a text to everybody, that we care close their doors and, um, they're no longer in business, so.
Back to drawing board.
So I guess we can call ourselves lucky that we didn't get into a contract with them. And.
I think they sent us a contract.
I know.
Well, but I just don't understand.
So, you know, and we all had hindsight, I guess, of a loyal saying, if something sounds too good to be true, it probably is. Well.
So it's very, so it's very few companies that are actually even taking any recycling at this point. And ABC, me and I have a couple other towns that have ABC. Supposedly, there's a rumor that they're going to be filing for chapter eleven June thirtieth.
So nobody's gonna have any dollars.
Just ABC, New Bedford Waste is still gonna exist.
Oh, okay.
You see, it's, there's a lot to it, but that's the very short piece of it. We're fortunate in that we don't have ABC as our actual hauler, because that's what all these other communities have, and they were, could have noticed that we'll pick up your trash, but you're gonna have recycling sat inside your road. So we're fortunate that we have Borges. Where he's gonna take it, if this actually goes through, I don't know. I would assume that they have to send us some kind of writing, that they are no longer, or like, send Peter Borges or something. If they were to, if they'll longer take the material. Yeah. With a lot of their loans and notes they have, ABC has taken out. It would be foolish for them to leave anyone who's actually paying, because a lot of their notes are in relation to the fact that he has X amount of towns that are paying him.
Yes, could keep him going.
Mr. Gray, so we'll see where this goes.
Yeah, it's still all up in the air. Kevin did a little bit of work with, uh, negotiating with, um, New Bedford Waste to, are we still on with that?
Well, it's funny, because that same week, so we had our meeting, and I ca- I called that gentleman back, brought the voicemail, and said, hey, can you call back? We had our meeting. We talked about the ninety five dollars. That discussion we had with Mallory, maybe we should go see if there's a, a ceiling of one oh five, one ten, whatever it was. I left a voicemail, then I left another one, and I haven't gotten any calls back. And I have this person's direct number.
Yeah, so do I, I've never.
And I'm thinking about texting now, texting, but, um, maybe because of all this, hit the fan, maybe he's like, ah, you're paying the one seventeen now.
So the worst case scenario is the one seventeen at this point.
So far, but he told me on the phone, he said, I can get you down to a ninety five. He, he had said, let me look at this last month and see what I can do for the next month. So I think he was gonna work with us like, uh, slow, e- each month, seeing how the market was.
Yeah.
But not to ex- surely not to exceed the one seventeen, but, uh, I haven't got any phone calls back.
We'll only get a bill, won't we?
Yeah. But I'm gonna try again, I'll keep trying, I'm persistent.
Yeah, I mean.
Another thing to look at too is, what does Berkeley do for, uh, I know they have their transportation, people drop off their stuff. We didn't land up.
Another trash goes to C Mass.
Yeah, there, there was some stuff they, they bring to wherever to sell it, but we sort everything there, so the cardboard is one, mint paper, glass, metal.
But I'm saying, would that be cost effective for the town? Sending out the.
I don't think Borges would be able to, I mean, that would be white, the, uh. I don't think Borges would be able to, I mean, that would be white, the, uh.
Well, you need a roll-off, a couple.
We have that at the transfer station.
We're talking about people bringing their own stuff to the transfer station. If worse came to worse, like this one seventeen.
Well, you're.
The way this market just kept going and going and going and going.
So, you can get money for cardboard, paper.
Yeah, not white cotton.
Eh, maybe plastics.
Got old.
Yeah, of course, metal. Um, the thing that, this big issue's glass. Um, no one wants glass. Carney and Rainey, you know, at Field Dog Track, they're taking glass at eighty dollars a ton, and they're crushing it. They're pulverizing it, it's almost sand, and they're able to mix it with the aggregate.
Mix it like asphalt. Okay.
As like a road base. Um, so they're the only ones in the whole area that I know of that are taking glass, but again, it's eighty a ton, it's better than one seventeen. Um, I think we probably, unless we did the hauling, I think we still wind up paying a little bit to get rid of the other materials if they were separated, but it would be minimal compared to what we're paying now, because you're getting money back, um.
Well, I think, I think they pay to get rid of a lot of it, but it's three dollars a ton paying instead of a hundred dollars a ton. They, they're still paying to get rid of it, so.
Yeah, and they, but they gotta pay the roll-off. Unless they do.
They, they own their own roll-offs.
Okay, yeah, so that's what's good. Uh, one good thing is.
Yeah, I believe the EPW drives it down.
Let's see what that is.
If you get RDP, if we get RDP money, we can use that to purchase roll-offs.
Yes. Uh, New Bedford Waste, they, they did tell me they're gonna, they're opening up a MRF in the future. That might help us in the future.
That's impressive. Building's in the process of being built.
Yeah.
That's why it's like tricky right now, if he says, I'm gonna drop in the sea and leave all these towns that are paying.
But he's.
Now that funding's gone.
Oh, it's him that's doing it. I thought it was New Bedford Waste that was doing it.
Yeah. Same, same guy.
Okay, my career, alright.
Yeah. So, you know, if he wants to keep going with the building and actually be able to keep doing business, he needs to, it's very delicate.
Could that be excellent, we had that on MRF. And I, there was one that was supposed to go into Free Town, um, same bad company, Republic.
Yes.
That kind of, that's on, that's on hold.
So right now, Mr. Carrera, I get, believe is hauling everything, which is another reason why the costs are so high. A lot of it is second to New York. Which, now you're paying for all that extra haul.
Yeah, it's crazy, huh?
Yeah?
I heard Republic was having some problems.
Republic's having trouble too.
I know the night Peter Borges called me, uh, hauling, that's when he told me that, uh, what was going on, and, um, a lot of the towns that, um, were going there were pretty much out of luck.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm nowhere to bring it now, right? And I think it was Marion that called New Bedford Waste.
It's a good problem.
They said, we can take it, but it's gonna be high, which is over the one seventeen we were paying. So they said, forget it, so I don't know what they're doing with it, but.
I think Free Town's bringing it to the Fall River. Is there a transfer station there?
Oh, I'm sure there's places to bring it if you're willing to pay, huh?
But they were paying, because they, they were a weekly customer.
Hmm.
Imagine that, one day you have it, because the trash doesn't stop, it's weekly.
Uh, Capital. Capital Paper, another recycling outlet. They notified, I know of one town that had them, um, they drove down, walked into their office on a Thursday afternoon, said, figure it out, we're all done on Monday.
It's crazy.
It's crazy, huh? We just scrambling. I don't think we need to sign a large conversion.
Figure it out. Well, I'm working on it.
We're, uh, at this point. Do we send the message when it's a big alert?
I've never done this before.
We're gonna let the dust settle and see what the future brings us, I guess, at this point.
That's all we can do. Let it ride.
We're budgeted for the right amount right now, though.
Yeah, and, uh,
Yeah.
So at least we're.
As far as the, uh, recycling initiative for clean, clean recycling items, um, uh, we did discuss that a little bit last time, and, uh, he, the hauler, Borges may be receptive to putting a flyer into the, uh, I know additional charge. Uh, if they find some, uh, contaminated recycles or dirty recycles, they're just gonna leave them there. Uh, to let the public know, we will be initiating this, uh, in the future, as, as far as, uh, your clean, single stream recycling. Um, talked about it before, it's, uh, you can't throw sandwiches inside paper bags into the recycling. You can't throw pizza in a pizza box. If you have something like peanut butter that might be a pain in the neck to, to clean, hate to say it, put it in the trash, uh, you know, but right now.
Start from the start.
Yeah, ninety-five percent. And the foreign people who are accepting our recycles, recyclables, I guess, are wanted at ninety-eight percent, which is probably impossible, but, uh, even so far as if you got a pizza box, you know how the ring where the pizza sits on, it's got pizza on it, put that in the trash, and so the cardboard box and, and the recycles, uh, as clean as you can get it. That's the only thing that may, in the future, have a shot at bringing the price down, so, um.
I would recommend also.
Sounds kinda silly, but.
Yeah, though, that flyer that, um, Kathy Merzak gave us, we put that on the website, I know we talked about that, or even send that out to folks. And I, I had told Peter that I was gonna get him those Free Town stickers, he hasn't.
Yeah, I was usually mentioning that, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, I'll just bring them in next time.
Okay.
Oh, that would be.
So this, so this way, 'cause he said he's willing to get, put them out.
We'll just have to get fronted.
But if we send out those flyers and put on the website, and even talk to Cable about circulating that as well, uh, at least we get the word out, so then he has his, uh, problem areas, he can leave those, those little stickers, those tags. So you get the less phone calls. It, it, it really is a waste. They're calling you, you're calling him, you're, then you're calling them back, did you end up going out? Then sometimes you have to call back the cus- uh,
Oh, yeah.
the town resident, when he could just leave the sticker. And they know, and they know what happened.
He's willing to do that, so.
And they can see what they left. Oh, the bags. Oh, alright, no bags, you know what I mean? Saves everybody a little bit of time.
I was, it was kinda comical, some of the stories that, uh, Peter Borges saw during last meeting, uh, when he's out there picking his stuff up. And I can see why some of this left behind, and I think they, they take as much as they can, but, you know, it comes to a point where common sense should prevail of what you're throwing out there in, in the, uh, recycle, so. Anyway, we'll be starting that soon, we're not gonna go crazy with it. Uh, it's just an awareness type thing. Uh, we're trying to help you, help yourselves, and just do what you need to do, and, um, keep your recyclables clean, that's all. Alright, moving on to, uh, proposed regulation changes. Um, I know we discussed a lot of items, and I know you haven't had time to put, uh, something together yet. I think we're, and, and you guys are welcome to speak, of course. I think where, where we need to be is, as far as what we've agreed to.
Mm-hmm.
We just need to put it down on paper and get it done and.
Up there, just go and clean it up and get it in a presentable, you know, that we can put as a tag.
Right, it's just, but there always seems to be something else that comes up.
Well, we could set up another, um, I know we only, we, now we scheduled for the summer, shorter, um, schedule, but.
Yeah.
We, we had a tad earlier and, uh, or hopefully this last stuff on the agenda, and just set aside a little workshop, again, just to review that part again.
Workshop.
Yeah, and say, are we comfortable with this? Yeah, 'cause what I'd like to do.
Clean it up and then. Draft it and get it in, in the paper for an advertisement.
'Cause I'm trying to do it for myself, a manual on everything, so this is gonna be the Title Five, uh, septic and wells part. But then eventually you'll have a chapter on anything that we wanna add on food.
Right.
Uh, tanning, uh, we don't have any tanning, but we should have something.
Tattoo color.
Body art, yeah. We already have something with tobacco, we wanna make sure. When it, when it says our compliance checks are, all that stuff. So there's a chapter on anything, anybody that calls, public records, whatever it is, there it is for you.
Yeah, there should be, there should be a chapter on each one.
Yeah, but let's do the septic, it's most important right now, because right now, s- for myself, Seppul is still, they can still pass and I, and it's.
It's crazy.
Do we, do we really want that right now?
No.
No, so. So I guess, uh,
As I.
in between what you're, when you're, what you're doing. Like I do myself, I'm still working on mine, though. We, we took ours offline and then late though, because, uh, we're working, our board is working on that. Same thing here. But you have to chip away at it.
Yeah, our whole website is a disaster anyway, so.
And we have to make workshops, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, there's been, um, and, as you know, it's just one thing after another, after another. Um, and, uh, but say, everything seems to have been cleared away for the most part. We're gonna talk about restaurant inspections, but yes, regs is the next thing on our hip raise. But just to throw at you, somebody called looking for five oh eight William Street, they needed a Title Five inspection, they looked for information. Still in boxes. Her and I spent an hour and a half sorting William Street out, so we could find the five oh eight out of all William Street, just in two banker's boxes. So it was three man-hours to find one document. That was completely unexpected.
Where, where are all the files? I've been out trailing.
They're in the conference room next door on the attic.
In banker box on the floor. So, things like that just take up more time than you expect, so.
Isn't there like, uh, um, what are those programs that have like, um?
Intern.
Yeah, but not the intern one. They, we had them in, uh, Free Town, you have, uh, folks that come in.
The, the senior staff.
Senior staff.
Upper.
Oh, the senior work off, upper.
These are the building department files, I know that they're working on it. We just, sometimes we need stuff out of their files, so they're working on resolving, getting them put away, so.
Yeah, the others.
What I'm saying, like, the file stuff, my goodness, that'd be great.
Mm-hmm.
It's hard work for the person that's doing it, but it's still needed work, man.
What we did was, we put them into hundreds, so, one to a hundred, a hundred, two hundred, and then we put them back in order, and we put a little sticky on it, so at least now you can pull a hundred, two hundred, whatever address you need, and it's labeled, but they're still in boxes, like.
Yeah, it's just, it takes time, so it's been slowing us down, so we're getting there, though.
Excellent. You know, Jim had, uh, a commissioner. Said he had money in his, uh, budget for interns, and he said that, uh, his office manager didn't want the door to sell, so she knew what things were. Maybe we could top that budget, uh, as part of our, you know, what we need to do, if you will let us. Um, it was part of the transition to the new building, so, um, I'll ask him about it, or we can ask him about it.
Let's say, that was just one thing that's gotten in our way.
Would you, would, would you guys be receptive to an intern that may be able to?
Doesn't matter to us, yeah.
'Cause it, 'cause I've tried to put all kinds of files away, and once the phone rings, you have to, you stop what you're doing, but that person's designated just for that? That frees up your time, and obviously, we can just go back and say, if, if you guys go by alphabet or, or, or block number, the, uh, street address, however you do it, it's easy to go find the file later on.
Well, even today, we said, well, we'll put these into the filing cabinets, you know, we'll put, it was William Street, one hundred, two hundred, and then when she got, but.
But it was, she was in the middle of the C, so her jumping to the W's, it was just, it would've been too much, but we had the entire con, we're occupied, so. Say, it just, things take in time, it, it's supposed to come to an end. We're trying. I've got all the stuff when we get to agent before.
I guess.
In time.
Yeah.
And they wonder what we do, huh?
But it would be great if we could get an intern in there. It'd probably only be a couple of weeks if that, if they could focus on just that uninterrupted.
Stacy's got time in between inspections?
Absolutely.
Let the record show I did not say that.
Well, I said it with a joking tone.
How'd you make out with your marijuana regs with the, I read Brett's email, that pretty much they're not gonna get involved with the marijuana regs from the Board of Health. The Board of Health is gonna handle it. That pretty much how it went.
As that should've been from the start. Um, I don't know, 'cause I haven't been into a meeting, because I was left off the email chains, and then I was told, uh, two days before last meeting, they had that there was a meeting, which I couldn't be at, 'cause I have another obligation, and now there's one tomorrow, which I also cannot be at, 'cause I have another obligation. So, I think that's a good idea, that we just do our thing. We're not, we're not looking for zoning and things like that, which I can understand, they would need to talk, it's merely a sanitation
Do our thing.
Yeah.
and especially like the food and single serve and, you know, things like that, that's the main focus.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to decide, the age, we'll have to decide, uh, how much, uh, the permit fee will be, how many times we're gonna inspect.
And the age, the age.
Do you, do you have that in your computer?
Um, I think.
The marijuana regs.
We said a thousand dollar permit fee.
Could you send them again to us?
Four inspections a year.
Sure.
Yeah, we.
Actually, I have copies with me, if you wanna copy now, or if.
Yeah, I'll take a, I'd rather look at a hot copy, I don't wanna go finish.
I brought them.
So, yeah, at, at a meeting, we'd have to, where, where it's blank, or it says, uh, to fill in, we'd have to fill it in and then put the name of the site in there.
We did.
It's always recommended to send, or, then really send it, send it over to the town, correct?
We did.
I did.
Went for each of them.
Yeah, most of these are within the state guidelines anyway, right?
So. Matt edited that, and I'm sure you guys might have other things that you wanna, I have the original from, um, is it?
Yeah. It's all edited for our thoughts and comments from the last time we talked about it.
Now, this is like a carbon copy of, uh, is it yours or another community's, uh?
Which was approved by.
Yeah, it was approved, right?
Um, that's the one he went by, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll still send you two electronically, that way you.
We did not put, um, the fee in the regs, because then if you have need to change the fee, you have to redo the, you have to
Read through the reg.
do a whole hearing process and everything, so the fee would just go in the fee schedule.
Thank you.
Um.
Right.
I believe, yeah, four, minimum of four inspections annually, unscheduled. That's pretty standard, for.
So is this a, a reg or a po- regulation? Okay.
It's a regulation.
And it, we're supposed to, we should have this in place before any host agreements. We're not close to that, right?
Uh, that way.
We have, planning board has an article going in for a marijuana overlay district, which will cover all, uh, facets of, uh, the marijuana industry, whether it be adult use, uh, medical, uh, edibles, uh, what's the other one? There's three or four, I think.
Recreation.
Yeah.
Nah, I see adult use.
So this does not apply to medical, because that's controlled by the state. We don't have any authority over that. This is everything else. Um.
Okay.
So, so I'm sorry, the Board of Health is actually what, we are the governing authority? I, I missed the beginning and, uh.
We, we can, we can, uh, make regulations.
It's.
Pretty, well, I would say as far as the health regulations go, uh, I don't know.
It's, so, these are pertaining to ensuring that there's no illegal sales, um, to specifically youth under twenty-one. Um, it will cover, so, legal age, um, an operating permit, just like, say, a food establishment, because it has a food, if it's edible, since it's food product.
Oh, okay.
If it's smoking, it'd be like a tobacco permit, that kind of thing.
So we'll be the permitting?
Yeah. Um, and just covers technically food type items, so like no out-of package sales, those, um, self-service displays, no vending machines. So those are things that we definitely want to discover.
Okay.
I see, it's pretty good right now.
As far as districts, that falls under planning and zoning. Uh, there is a mention here, which it's, it's whatever winds up being greater, if planning and zoning was greater, but just the regards to where they could be in relation to a school.
Oh, okay.
Or not.
At least of a twenty-one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-one, um, and it references like all the, uh, enforcement penalties, so, references the twenty-one D tickets, we have the right to revoke, get hearing, things like that.
So we're basically like the enforcing authority?
Right, just, I look at it as like a hybrid between food and tobacco, is what it is.
Yeah, I just, I just should, uh.
Like the actual business, like the business license would probably still be like any other store, but.
But the Board of Health is basically overseas, is that the right word?
It's the safe and sanitary operation.
Wasn't it, was there another definition we were gonna put in the RMD, what was it?
Registered.
Marijuana, that's right.
Registered, right?
Yeah.
Medical.
We're gonna put that in.
Having medical, yeah.
Um. Um, no consistent pertaining to it, and there's no mention of medical elsewhere in it, so.
Perfect.
I just wanna make sure this is not conflicting now with what we, the distances we set up to.
It's whichever's greater. So when I called the state about it, they said, they, the state recommended five hundred feet, and the planning zoning wants to recommend a thousand or two thousand or whatever.
Yeah.
That's fine, but the state recommended five hundred feet in front of these regulations.
All right, I'll, that's the only thing I see that I'm gonna have to probably work, take a peek at is the distances from.
I think when we're comfortable with this, we should definitely send it over to our attorney, our attorney.
Yeah, I think so.
And they'll make notes, any kind of uh references for our consideration.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Another thing I I've been doing now is uh talking to different facilities where they wanna put in uh the kitchens. And they need some kind of grease trap or interceptors, whatever they.
Right.
So when we're doing any plan reviews for the septic and stuff, or uh the time to still.
So they'd still call and they're all to.
It's just something we're trying to look into.
Yeah, and any um, they would still need a food permit too.
Yeah.
Okay.
If they're, I mean, if they're selling edibles, it's food, and this, that's, it's food, it's they give food on top of this.
Okay. So we actually need to draft a new marijuana.
Uh, it would just be like a food, just like a retail food permit.
Right, but in addition to that, they're gonna have some kind of a permit that allows them to sell cannabis-related items.
Correct, that's what this permit, regulations will.
Yeah.
Right, but I'm just saying, we're gonna have to draft a permit, cause I don't, I have a food permit now, but I don't have.
Oh, oh, I got you, yeah, 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 yeah.
But we, maybe just change the word.
Yeah, would, yeah.
But we need it in separate standalone.
Thank you.
Yeah, it would be separate, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then the fee, I recommend a thousand dollars for the year. That's what the folks do.
When I, when I was talking to the attorney, she said that you have to, obviously when you set a fee, you have to justify, you have to make it.
Justify it. And I think given that, we have four inspections.
So we have four inspections, administration, we just have to really look at it and discuss.
Yep. Okay. Five hundred, that's would be the absolute minimum, but.
What's that do if it's uh edibles for medical use, there's no food permit?
Correct.
Isn't that crazy, huh?
It it's like a um prescription.
But they said it's not gonna look like it's a, from my understanding, it's not gonna look like a.
Gummy bear.
Gummy bear or something, it's just gonna be like a glob.
Yeah, no, but it's crazy that if it's for medical, you don't get a food permit if it's.
Yeah, yeah.
Glob of jelly, gelatinous, something.
So we take care of nothing to do with medical, that is the state?
Hundred percent state, no authority.
It's a, yeah, it's a, it's a lot, it's a lot right now with this stuff. So everybody's trying to get the ha- uh handle on it, and everybody's trying to do the right thing and.
Hmm, just get it figured out. Okay, thank you.
S- so uh, do we wanna review it for us, or are we looking for motion center with the town council?
Well, I think.
I think it looks good, myself.
I think it looks good too. I just feel things I wanna check on, which probably will bring it up next meeting and.
Like everybody looks at it?
Yeah.
Once we all look at it.
We'll watch out through it, maybe changes, and then we can go down next meeting to send it to town council if you're happy to.
Thank you.
See what they come back with, and then we can get it advertised, read it out to.
Because the penitent.
I was just gonna say red pen it and send it to me, and I'll have whatever changes for the next meeting.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, just in case I made a typo or something, yeah.
Um, I'm gonna go back up to five D and transfer station fees and payment procedures. Uh, the transfer station fees, I I spoke with Tom a little bit today, I was hoping he could come in with us. He said you have to kind of justify the price you're setting on an item. Such as a chair or a sofa would be considered, we charge by half loads and full loads. So it'd be a half load, probably ten bucks. So I think the fee, I I'd like to get him here to discuss fees with us. But um, so the other half of this is about payment procedures. I don't know if we talked about this last time.
So it checks only, right?
I did.
Yeah, the.
Right now it's checks only.
The TA wants to not accept any forms of payment at the transfer station. We like credit cards, but they're not set up here.
Not yet.
To do credit cards, where, you know, if you have your. I'm not a computer guy, so I don't even know how it would be set up, but you have an item that's a half load, you have an item that's a mattress, you have it, you, so you hit a code.
Right.
It goes in, it tallies it, creates the bill, creates an invoice, and it goes somewhere, also saves the information, so we'll know. How much of this we took in, or how much of that we took in, but they're not ready to do uh credit cards at here yet.
Have we had issues with the checks?
Yeah, we waived the whole, we waived the whole uh two thousand, from for two thousand fifteen down. We waived a bunch of people's fees that they've been paying.
Well, yeah.
Well, that's because we were billing them. They weren't ha- they didn't, they could dump, and then they were billed afterwards.
Yeah, it's not.
Now it's not, you have to pay first, and then you can dump, so it should, except for bounced checks, it should be a better.
You pay first.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we had, a couple of weeks back, we had three bounced checks, but that's nobody's, it's it's not our responsibility, and all the checkers gonna bounce when it's accepted.
You don't have to go out.
No, but a week ago, I got a check for May twelfth, dated August twelfth. So I had to go see the town clerk, get a phone number from the census, call the person who laughed, and um said he was gonna send the kid down to to bring a new check. Three days later, so I'm into the next week, I still didn't have the check, so I called him again, the kid came down within an hour with a new check, so.
But again, it's time.
But it's just, it's the time.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, and we did get one check that was like um, Port Lauderdale, Florida, is the, do we, the address on it, and it's like, well, does that mean they're a resident in town or not, you know, so, but that's not up to us to get in the leasing, you know, so. Not at the check level, you know, once you get the check, it's already paid for.
As long as they have a dump sticker around their vehicle.
So.
Well, that'd be an extra duty for you, and that would be more hours, so.
She's already asked, though, hopefully, well, hopefully.
If they don't win that game, I'll play away.
Um, we talked about punch cards.
It's too painful.
Yeah.
As a system of payment. Um, excellent of dollars per punch, depending on what you have, whether it's five dollars of, you know, each punch is five dollars or something like that. Um, Tom, when I spoke with him, buddy, he kinda liked that idea, I kinda liked that idea, we hope it does it. Uh, punch cards, but where do you buy them?
I, I very much don't like the idea. As somebody who uses the transfer station in Berkeley twice a week, it would be really annoying to me to.
So what do you do over there?
You hand them cash at the window.
Yeah, we don't do, I don't like cash.
And they print out a little receipt, and they give it, and you're supposed to show it to the guy when you drop, you know, the mattress or whatever, or the TV and, you know, and get your receipt for it. It's all cash.
Yeah, but they have, you're open a lot of hours over there, right?
Two days a week.
Oh, yeah, a lot of hours. They open from eleven to six thirty on Wednesday, and what, eight AM to three thirty on Saturday.
Two days a week?
Two days a week, yes. They call that a lot of hours, but it's eight hours each day, so.
Yeah, we're doing only, we're doing eight a week now, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
In fact, I went in today with a hundred dollar bill and got my forty dollar dump sticker and bought two rolls of bags.
However, they don't have curbside.
No, we don't.
Oh, right.
He's probably bonded, he definitely bonded, he or she who's ever accepting the money, neither here or there with you, but.
Then it's an issue on a Saturday, what do you do with the cash? You don't, I mean, that's.
I know. Yeah, we just.
Put in one of those banker tubes right to town hall.
What are you doing late April?
Late April, that's uh.
I don't handle the transfer station at all.
So I do every, everything's on.
Freetown, we said handle.
And it's essentially.
Cash and checks, but then we were just trying to do checks only. When I left, we hadn't done that yet, but uh.
Come in, you pay, and you get rid of the mattress. Yeah, you get fifteen dollars, and you drew a card that we could fill out, or max, we sign it, and then when you go.
You would just come in and. Whatever it was, you card, they would line up like, oh, you have this, you have that, and you have this.
So it's almost like the sticker for the bulky pickup day, where you can get your stickers.
Exactly. I honestly think we should tell trash bags there too, but.
You should. But right now, is it, is it really this, is it really that broken until we come up with a different?
I don't think it is.
No, it's not really broken, it's just it's a matter of.
A few bounced checks.
Transfer station now has checks for whatever, a thousand dollars, sitting in there until they drop it off for us on Monday, so.
But it's a cash.
It is better than cash. And then we had a few bounced checks, which is aggravating, so.
There's no way to drop it off somewhere?
There's a lot of paperwork on our end to fill out the turn-in sheets.
They can put it in the thing, they can, he can drop it Saturday afternoon.
I think that's where it is.
Oh, that's where they do that.
Yeah, they put, then drops it in.
Okay.
But it is just cash, no cash, so.
Pretty secure, it's checks.
Right.
Um, I think it's just something that's coming from uh.
Well, like I mentioned before, if if, when they do it upstairs, then we'll take a little kiosk over there, that's a little satellite.
I think so, I think you're right.
So I believe it's sandwich.
Because they have to really determine upstairs how they're gonna do it.
For the credit card.
Yeah, cause then they'll be established, and then we can have some training, but to start off at the transfer station makes no sense.
Yeah, no. No, not the uh.
Total of eight hours, the person's gonna be all confused. Nobody's swiping cards and.
I think Sandwich has a, like the parking meter kiosk, they have, they had them, wanted to be specific for the transfer station. And when it takes credit cards, it's all done via like cell connection or whatever, solar pa- or solar powered, so with a battery backup, so you don't even have to have it connect to anything. And it takes credit cards, you just go up and you punch in, I'm getting rid of a TV, a mattress, and a half load of other trash. And it'll tally it up, and it'll say, all right, here was thirty, thirty dollars, and you swipe a card, and it prints out like two receipts, and you keep one, and you hand the other to the tenant, fifty of off, you boo, away you go.
Yeah, but he bought.
But the machine's like nine grand, so.
Oh.
I think that ends that conversation.
With my grant money for it.
Yeah.
Right, and that's Sandwich. And that's how they bought theirs, was through grant money.
Sandwich?
Punch cards are a little weird too, like if you did it ahead of time, I'll be old. When anybody that goes, uh, what I see, when people go to the transfer station. It's almost, it's like a different transaction. They're like, oh, what else you got? Oh, you got that TV in the back there? All right, uh, another whatever, twenty bucks.
Right.
It's not, it's not your normal transaction, when you go to something, you buy just that. Somebody's gotta kinda look at your truck or something.
The town hall.
Yeah, you gotta go look at it.
So that's when they bill you differently, and if the check bump, cause it's, it's on them, they go get their money, but uh, I don't think we have that many.
No.
The town hall closed on Fridays, I think that make it more difficult for people, so you know, gee, I think I'll go to the transfer station Saturday, and give it X, Y, and Z, wow, gee, I gotta wait another week.
Yeah.
I know, it's kinda tough.
Well, you can buy one there, so that's a plus.
Wait, but if they didn't want them buying it there, then that's, but if you're buying it there, you're still giving them a check, so, right, yeah.
Yeah. I, we could just tell, we love the idea.
I agree with Kevin, I think we should.
We love the idea of guys, set up, and then we'll, we're on board. Even our office, Board of Health, we're on board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have the uh, the rates, the draft, um, scheduled the rates. Hasn't been posted yet.
Just wanted to check with you guys first.
But we did go over this with Mr. Barry, so.
I was uh.
Looked at my account.
But getting, before we really sit down and analyze fees. Uh, collecting uh fees from other towns and do a comparison, uh, when we finally sit down and do the fees. I mean, some of the towns to me are outrageous, uh, like they, uh, some of the loads. Seventy-five dollars in in one town, which to me is kind of outrageous. A regular eight for pickup.
For construction debris, like you're talking bricks and concrete and sheet rock?
Yeah. Construction debris, yeah.
It's cheap for that.
Yeah.
We don't accept that.
We don't accept construction.
Yeah, we do too, it's a whole pickup truck load, seventy-five dollars.
Yeah, construction.
Well, yeah, it is, seventy-five dollars, yeah.
Sure enough, here, it's not acceptable.
Oh, that stuff, yeah, sheet rock isn't bricks, but I'm sorry.
So if you had numerous items.
But we shouldn't take it from any contractors at all.
Right, this is residential.
Residential at all, at all times. No contractor should come over there.
But if somebody came in with a trailer with five different.
Contractor things, I don't think contractors are, I think it's people that are doing work on their homes.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm saying it shouldn't, uh, Bob's uh, Bob Builder or whatever.
Bob the Builder, no.
Shows up with a big truck, say, sorry, you gotta go, you're in.
So I mean, I'm looking at one.
Cause it's an easy way, instead of him buying a dumpster.
Five, six of these items?
Tom's gonna take a hit.
That, uh, one.
Where's the recliner?
Two are charging ten, the other four are charging fifteen.
Even a, all most seats actually.
You can bring down the road and get paid for it.
Oh, yeah.
I guess washer would be dryer, dryer would be more.
Bring down the road where.
Is that too dry?
Bring to the wear at the scrap metal place, and they'll give you money for it. If you're already loaded and bringing the transfer station, I'd rather bring it down there and get money instead of paying fifteen dollars to get it.
Oh. Is it a free? I guess so.
Just fifteen, five, eleven.
That's just a definite.
We had a separate, just metal, we had a separate metal bin, say like, you know, we wouldn't.
That's just expensive, they go.
They call them white, yeah, and you just dump it out.
Yeah. Any of the, like, anything that's metal, and then just.
These are really the fees I think to get rid of.
All that have, we get, we get the money for the metal then.
We do have metal. Right, we do have a separate metal.
You do this today, this is good.
But we're charging.
Yeah, it's charged, I was just talking about it, I was revising.
We want to.
For you to dump it, but.
Right.
We do, we move and have. But I didn't wanna put it on the website, to all of you had a chance to. We have the other, we have an, another one that didn't reflect a sofa or a couch or a love seat.
Tractor tire wasn't on there.
Yep, it didn't mention, um.
Oh, residential yard waste, man just said res- had said yard waste.
Yeah, so we. Yeah, we didn't increase the fees, we just added a few items on there that, you know, people weren't sure if they would be taken.
We're talking tractor tire, we're not talking.
The big rear wheel, I would.
You're talking tires bigger than twenty-four inches, basically, yeah.
Bob, Bob's tire.
Like a Bobcat tire, I mean, not Bobcat, backhoe tires, yeah, the big ones.
Cause Tom mentioned to me today that we talked about getting rid of the tires.
Yep.
And he said tractor tires up there are two hundred dollars to get rid of.
Right, but if we charge two hundred dollars to take it, how many are gonna end up in a transfer station? How many are gonna end up on the side of the road?
None. None.
So.
Good point.
We're gonna bring a Bob's tire?
Yeah.
Dollars for your tire for the other ones.
That's what we pay to get rid of regular tires.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine to me.
If you're not.
It's worth the ride, it's worth the experience.
Good.
Really?
So we wanna put like washer slash dryer?
Okay.
There'll be a dryer on there.
Yeah.
Top of it, top of the vehicle, yeah.
There it is, right, it's on my face. Cause I'm getting, trying to get rid of a dryer, that's why. So, yeah, go ahead, there it is.
Say what, I'll charge you ten dollars, and I'll be, I'll get rid of it for you.
Kevin, all right.
Yeah, I was gonna put in the wetlands. With my tires.
Don't be a air conditioner.
Yeah, they.
So if you don't need to vote on this, I guess, or?
Yeah, it looks fine to me.
But it was just for more information, so.
What's posted now? Was it this?
It was, um. Revised back in seventeen, but it didn't have a couch or a sofa or a love seat or, uh, didn't mention yard waste, so.
Someone along the way, somebody took them off.
Do you wanna just let uh Tom look at it?
He already does.
Okay.
Yeah, he did it with us, we were all.
Oh, good, all right. Yeah, I don't know what happened to the couch, sofa, love seats, all of that, but it disappeared.
Yeah. He added something else to it too, no curbside, no bags, curbside pickup.
Oh, no bags. Cause he said a lot of people just show up with a bag of clothes and just say, here, and it's like, no, we don't, no, it's trash.
Should have a textile recovery.
Yeah, because those are, those, they'll do that to us for free.
Yeah, we don't do textile, yeah.
Usually free, and they'll give us money for it.
That is one of the things that we were kicking around uh about it, but you need somebody to come in and get it too, and that's, so.
Well, ba- basically textile, I think it'll come down, give you a little bin or trailer thing for free, and probably like for a bin load, they'll give you like a hundred bucks or fifty bucks, something like that.
Yeah.
And it doesn't cost us anything, it doesn't, we do nothing for it, they just literally give you a check, that's all.
Bring it down to Jack's thrift corner.
That's where it all ends up.
So, so I think we're all set here, and then we'll go on to the next item.
Do we wanna?
All right. All right, next one?
That's great.
You guys want these, you wanna keep it?
Yeah, I'm gonna keep it. Maybe I might have a half trailer load.
That's, all right, that's enough. Can we do uh payroll and bills?
Okay.
Um, we didn't have any bills, I was away last week, and we didn't.
And I am incompetent.
Well, we tried to, we tried to pay one bill.
No, 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 we should. We have a quiet week, and luckily it was then, but there is payroll. No, 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 for bills, for bills.
Quiet week, my, yeah, no.
I tried to do a turn-in sheet, that did not work. But I've learned now, so she's taught, so next time we'll be okay, so. It was a busy week, I didn't, there were two days I didn't even open the mail, it was just piled, I'm like, I just didn't have time.
All right, so, all we have is payroll, uh, last week's payroll total.
That's total for both weeks.
Thirty-one, forty-two, twenty-seven. I took care of two weeks.
Nope, the, on the front, at the bottom, is the two weeks.
So I tried to re-smart print to the hallway printer, after, with as many pages I stopped it at, three hundred and twenty-five, four to go.
Okay, we're getting five twelve.
I don't know.
Did you add them both together?
Yep, at the bottom.
Okay, I was, I'll do it this way. We're getting five. Okay, I'll just, I'll do it this way, weekending five twelve payroll sixteen sixty-five ninety-one, that included the, uh, landfill attendant. The office manager and our health agent, and weekending five nineteen was fourteen seventy-six thirty-six. Again, included our landfill attendant, office manager and health agent, so. That's what I signed on this, this week. Just so y'all know.
Okay.
We're at inspectors reports, and you're for us, alright.
Yay. Lot of wildlife calls, but that's this time of year, um, raccoons walking around during the day, which can happen, that's because they're out looking for food, because mom is, has had babies, so. You're gonna see coyotes, you're gonna see foxes, you're gonna see raccoons. It's okay unless they're doing something really silly like walking in circles or attack, trying to attack you, then I need to, then I need to know. Um, I'm gonna put a plug in for the annual town meeting, we're gonna have a leash law, bylaw come up, please, please, please come out and support this if you, if it's something that you want. I know I want it, two years ago, I wouldn't have said I wanted it, but I do now, it will help me, even though it'll make more work for me, it will help me immensely with a lot of things. Um, we also on the town warrant have a right to farm bylaw coming up, I also am in support of that, and I would like people to come out and support that, and we're gonna also, um, have a bylaw for an ag commission, which is, um, which helps with the right to farm bylaw. And I've had a few calls about Pleasant Street, we went out with the MSPCA, everything's fine. Um, we do have people in the neighborhood that are upset because they free range their animals and in doing so, they walk down the street or whatever. Um, until we have a regulation, they are okay to do that, um, so, something that we maybe think about, I've had a couple of calls of roosters, because windows are now open, now people hear their next door rooster at three o'clock or three thirty in the morning. We also don't have a regulation or bylaw for that, so that is, they can have roosters in town.
And peacocks.
And peacocks and guinea hens, guinea hens are the ones that make the most noise, but eat the most ticks, so I wouldn't mind having guinea hens in my yard at this point. Uh, let's see, was, we had a problem on Middle Street, we took care of that. I think that's about it.
That same problem you had?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna cover it under my, so.
Alright.
Thank you.
Casey, Casey, Stacy, um, all these animals that are out now looking for food, like the coyote, they're really not aggressive, they're just out there, uh.
They're just out there, I, I mean, last time we were here, we were fooling around, you know, Main Street, they had one that was really sorta out during the day, they're just looking for food, leave them alone, they'll go away. Don't leave food out, um, if you have chickens and that kind of stuff, I say lock them up, don't let them free range at this point, because a fox or a coyote's gonna take away a chicken to feed its babies. Um, a raccoon, even though it's not always, they will take a chicken if they're hungry enough, so, you know, if you have outside animals, little dogs, cats, don't leave them outside by themselves. If you have farm animals, chickens, ducks, rabbits, that something can get into, try to keep them so no, nothing can get into them.
Okay. Good advice, thank you. Health agent report.
Alright, just a couple of things I wanna throw out here, um, wells, um, we did our little well permit application, we don't have regulations yet for wells. But I wanna start having them test for arsenic in addition to the normal floatability requirements, um, and so I was gonna implement that as a policy until the regulations are in effect.
This is what we have so far with, um, well permits, so Tom wants to add at the bottom under reports, arsenic. Is there anything else you gentlemen think we should add, cause I actually have sent out, we got two permits in this week and I have emailed some, another property owner. So there's quite a few going in in areas that don't have town water.
Instead of realizing, kind of like a, an application and it's a certificate of compliance, like we might wanna be able to rip it off so that we can say, here's your permit, and then here's a certificate of compliance for the well, so that it's, there's a tracking for it.
That's true.
So we, we're, this has gone out the way you've got it, um, but we wanna modify and amplify it and get it to be more comprehensive, so. I just kinda thought out there, we'll talk about it when we get to the regs, I just wanted the board to be aware that I'm making it a policy for arsenic testing with the wells at this point in time, so, unless somebody.
Well, we have to follow that, right?
Say that again, just if you guys want to, like, say, I already kind of implemented it, so.
We, 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 we have.
It's just a policy, it's not a regulation, so.
Cause I think.
I think it's gotta be on the agenda for us to be able to take action on it.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Should we probably put on the next one?
Yep.
Okay.
Cause, cause what the state says is what, what, what you can test for.
Dying, but.
That's right.
And if you're gonna exceed it, you have to.
Add the arsenic within that.
I think it, no?
The allowance, I'll take it as.
Surprise.
It's not.
Big name, that's.
Wouldn't they have a big problem out western, with arsenic?
I know it's not on the list.
I would just double check too, I don't think it is.
But, but we can, we can add on, we'll look into it, but I'm pretty sure it's not on the list, so. So I just wanna make you, I make you as aware of that, the other thing was, is, um, we had a title five inspector call me, and they said, hey, we did a title five inspection, and I need to submit the report within thirty days. But the water department won't release the water meter readings, because there's outstanding money owed on their water bill, this is Somerset Water Department, that doesn't matter, so the, here's the thing, it's a matter of. So they're like, I will, I need to submit my report, and I'm like, well, you can send it in with the, with the note, and then we'll see if we can chase it down or whatever, but it was like. It was just one thing to be aware of, I guess, and like, you know, do we wanna make it part of our thing is that water bills have to be paid, or do we want our water department to start saying, you know. The title five inspections usually mean done for transfer of property, and that's usually one of the bills that has to be paid, cause it's, you know, one of those lean things, so. I just kinda throwing it out there, unless anybody had any thoughts on the matter, it was just kind of a FYI, so.
Yeah, I, I, I think.
I mean, it's supposed to, I mean, submit the report and then just write, leave a note on and say, hey, I tried, but.
Yep.
Yeah, and the temp was made, and then I guess, yeah.
Just follow up.
Okay. Um, now the transfer station, uh, inside DPW, whatever, they have, um, some tires and some stumps that they wanna be grinding, we're looking now in the budget to, to see what we get. We know we have money for the tires and stuff, and we're gonna be looking to get those removed in the near future, not immediately, but in the near future, so. It's already gone to procurement for the stump grinding and all that, so it's ready to go, that was part of that whole southeastern mass procurement group, so. Alright, so the last thing was, um, as Ross was away on vacation last week, and we were on our way to court for that house we were gonna tear down, um, we got a phone call. Um, there was a house where there was, um. Unsanitary conditions, and so Jim and I had to go down there, and we looked at it, Stacy came down too, there was some animals and stuff, we, um. Invicted people out of the home until it got cleaned up, that was on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, he called me Monday morning and said, hey, come back. We went back and did an inspection, and the place was, was very good, um, they ripped out carpeting, um, and put in like vinyl floors or whatever, not the pogo or whatever, um. And everything was great, so we allowed them back into the home on Monday morning, so, um.
It's the way it should be.
It's the way it should be, and they were very cooperative, and, um, it was great, and they, they had four cats, they're catching all the cats and getting rid of all the cats, they stole some dogs and stuff, but they, hopefully this will be a change in lifestyle and, um. We can move forward, I'm gonna continue to do, like, say, monthly inspections till we make sure they keep up with this, but, um, that was another bump in the road that I had last week, along with everything else, so.
You know, sometimes that's what people need, they're not aware of their environment around them and until it's brought to their attention, it's, uh, uh, uh. I don't know, it's, it, some, sometimes amazes me that, uh, I've seen a bunch of stuff since I've been doing this.
Well, that's, so anybody watching, like, if you know of a situation, call us, you know, because you, you can drive by these houses, you drove by this house and you would never have known this was in, on the inside was like that, so.
Yeah.
If you're aware of a situation, um, let us know, and we can check in on, um, yeah, I, uh, I, I had a, a busy week last week doing, um. And I didn't really leave the office except for like a couple of open holes or whatever, because I was trying to cover for Ross, but it's impossible, um, it, it's just, it, it is just too much, it comes in too fast. And I, I couldn't keep up, so, it, all I could do is barely manage to keep fires from starting, especially when you throw in court for four hours and a house eviction and, and, yeah, so. It was, um, I didn't get much done.
Oh, that was in twenty-five hours too, right?
Yeah, but I did, um, I appreciate more how much Ross does for the office, so, and, um, yes, but otherwise, I don't have anything else to report.
Good.
Very good.
Correspondence.
Any correspondence, Ross?
Oh, yes, couple things.
Cool.
Um, there's a notice there from the mosquito, that, um, they'll be spraying again.
Yep, it's gonna be back here.
Uh. Is this from Bristol County?
This was more an announcement, I guess it's correspondence.
Yes. Uh, just, these are some of our correspondence I wanna read to you, uh, just a quick note to let you know that our mosquito control, our delta size season will begin on five twenty-nine, weather permitting. We have not changed our methods, uh, pesticides or schedules since last year, but we will be posting our nightly schedule on your website. Now, I spoke with, uh, people at the Bristol County Mosquito Control Project, and I learned a little bit about their procedures, um. Before they spray, the temperature has to be above fifty-five degrees. They only spray between two AM and sunrise, and, um. The amount of pesticides they use is less than a shot glass per acre, so it's relatively safe. Um, and should you be out walking your dog at three o'clock in the morning, like we had an incident last year, and you get sprayed, uh, don't be too concerned. Uh, it's not harmful, but, you know, uh, I would certainly go home and.
It's not harmful in quantities, that it's being administered, but, yeah, if you were to drink a shot glass, well, then it could be harmful.
Yeah, right.
Um.
Yeah, there it is.
Uh, food recall, Melanie Wholesale Incorporated, she's an allergy dealer for undeclared peanuts and Melanie Mini Cookies with caramel flavor.
Where's it?
No, we already did that.
We did that.
Um.
Oh, it hasn't been finalized yet, so, it'll be posted on our website, so we'll announce it the next week.
Oh, yeah. Exactly.
Melanie Wholesale Incorporated, Brooklyn, New York's recalling its seventeen point six ounce package of Melanie Mini Cookies with caramel flavor because they contain undeclared peanuts. People who have allergies to peanuts run the risk of serious life-threatening allergic reaction if they consume these products. There you go. Okay, yep.
Oh, this one?
Yeah.
BLM issues allergy alert on undeclared egg and milk, um, BLM is voluntary recalling piano, raso, pesto sauce. That was terrible, as it may contain undeclared milk and egg, people who have allergy and severe sensitivity to milk and egg run the risk of serious life-threatening allergy reaction, allergic reaction if they consume this product. I guess for more information, you can, we're gonna keep this.
Yeah, these all, these all get, uh.
Yeah, these are posted.
Yeah, they're all posted in town hall, so.
Gentlemen, a list of inspections. Oh, sorry.
This is old, huh? Was that, I did, I made this, so.
Yeah, I.
We didn't update it after, I was getting nervous, go by the list, not by the date.
Yeah, don't go. Yeah, just, I just wanna know who's gonna go where.
Yeah, so this is, Joe, Joe did these and, uh, all these and, these are all ones, I did actually, the one I know, I did the Loops Field in April two thousand eighteen.
Yeah.
Yeah. So for those at home, this is our list of inspections that need to be done, and we're trying to decide, um, cause I'm not gonna be able to get to them all, um, which board members are gonna take which ones to complete the list.
Yeah. Uh, cow chip is coming up.
Next weekend, not this weekend.
Yeah.
And then powwow weekend after that.
Cow chips could be difficult for me on that party.
I'm away that Thursday through.
I, I can do next week, my problem is I can't do the powwow, um, for the setup day, which is Friday.
I wanna say it's, it's two weeks from next weekend.
It is, it's, it's two weeks, it's June, it's Father's Day weekend, it's like June fourteen, so I can't, but I can be back for them cleaning up to make sure they don't leave anything to.
Just, yeah, let me, let me know on that date, maybe I could do them.
I might be able to do it. I can probably do it, yeah, Kevin, I can, uh.
I'll send an email out.
Yeah.
Um.
But I can do the cow chip both then, so I can.
The schools, schools I would say has to be during the week.
I, I can do the schools.
Uh, this form, this.
Hey, I cannot.
I can do it next week, I can do it.
So this is the high school, the culinary arts is on the little section in the high school, you have to look at that.
I've, I've been in there with you, I believe.
So there's five, one, two, three, four, five, uh, daffodils, I can do it on my, I can do it, do it real quick on the way home. I guess, just highlight the ones that are, that are during the day that I, nobody can do, can I highlight them real quick? Real quick.
Yeah, that'll be easier.
Uh.
So she's highlighting by color for who's doing which ones, you already did Loops Field, right, Kevin?
I did Loops.
Yes.
Everyone, everyone's during the day, and then we can do it up.
So, so this is going on, a cow chip is gonna have to be here, Todd, right?
Yep.
Uh, Red Iron, they're not open now until September, so I thought it'd be seasonal later.
But I wanna say you guys inspect them in August, because they have like their pre-game, there's, there's stuff going on.
Yeah.
No. Oh, like, yeah, whatever it says, uh, when they're ready to open.
Yep.
It says September, October, when.
When they apply, really.
Okay.
So it's not.
So when they apply, same thing with the Whitney Academy pool and Papa Squash pool, when they apply.
Papa Squash came in, he's having a little trouble with one of his pumps, so I gotta go see him and work that out, so.
Okay, so, yeah.
So Whitney Academy and Papa Squash is gonna be taught.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause they, they have to apply, really.
Yep.
Um, daffodil, uh, the, the day schools will be, Todd, daffodils I can do. Saint Nicholas Amira. Well, let me just highlight the ones that are during the day.
Yeah.
Mannheim Auto has to be during the day, it's always like a Tuesday.
Yep.
They really only open one day a week.
Well, if that's what it is, then I guess I can.
So Tuesday morning.
I can do that.
That's.
During the day.
Primetime, I just.
During the.
Primetime, daytime, right?
What is it?
Primetime.
Primetime doesn't have any food in the building anymore, they have it catered.
Primetime, yeah.
It's catered, yeah.
They have to check it out, cause their refrigerator and their food gets delivered and they, they, they check off that they're receiving at a certain temperature, and then they're storing it and they're serving people.
Still check that, alright.
Alright.
So you still go through their bathroom, make sure they're washing their hands.
They still need a permit.
You still check their refrigerator, they're holding te- they're holding food.
Okay, so I guess I gotta do that one too, then.
Okay.
Yeah, cause that's during the day.
Okay.
Uh, diet and nursing home is kinda good during the, during the day.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, Joe Cavallo just did that one for us, that was the last inspection he did, so.
Oh.
When was that though, this year? Has to be this, right?
It was in eighteen, yeah, that was the last one he did, I'll have to look that up.
This one's a little difficult too, these two are Whitney Academies, they only open, what happens is they're, they're open from, they're always open, cause they're a school, and the kids live there. But when you get there after four o'clock, that's when it's kinda like everybody's coming back from school, they're trying to, uh, get them all settled in, getting their lunch, and it's a lot of distractions. You wanna be there when they're not there, just with the staff, you know what I mean?
So which is what time then, like twelve, four, before three?
Before three, yeah, before three, so, and they're real, they're really good, they're really good, they're.
Which one was that?
Whitney Academy, there's two of them.
And I'll show you the form that you're gonna use for those, there, there's a state form that you need for those.
Okay.
No, it's in our, it's in our folders, um. Pulse Caterer I can do, I see them all done.
Um, if you want, I can, I'll do, uh, Fast Mark. Uh, I just saw it.
Well, Duncan's right there too, if you wanna get.
Titan House of Pizza in Duncan.
Okay.
Okay.
And the yacht club, I can do the yacht club.
I'll do, uh, windows and Albeas and value gas.
That's all right there.
He said, yep, yacht club too, right?
I forgot what he said, daffodils, daffodils.
Yep. Tom, I don't hear you, jump up.
I have enough to do. I just orchestrate.
I'll do Mount, hopefully it's. If you want, I can run up to Dayton Mobile and forty-four, like.
If worse comes to worse, I would do one, but.
So from Ross.